Twenty-one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. That's the only one that stood out. All right, anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing? All right, moving on. Consent agenda. The back of the agenda is tonight's consent agenda. All right, do you have a motion?
Go ahead.
I second it.
I second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing? All right, informational, Main Street striping plan. Barry, you want to...
Yeah.
Let us know what's coming.
Well, Jeff North has been working on developing some of the plans. Got off to a little rocky start about the committee. I want to thank Jim for kind of stepping in and getting that moving in the right direction. So, we will be having a committee meeting Friday at four o'clock. I believe it's going to be at Sandy's Clinic area.
At Universal.
Yeah, Universal, yeah. And, you know, we're moving forward. I'll have, hopefully, much more to report next meeting.
If you have anything to say.
No, I just know that we're under a bit of a tight deadline, so I know that this... any of those meetings are going to be very important to get some real actionable plans to move forward, so we can meet the state's deadlines.
All right. And Hunter, you checked with the state and they're willing to move those two hydrants?
They're willing to talk with us about that, yes.
Okay.
We can't tell them where or which ones, but they're willing to talk with us about it.
Okay.
Hector Shaver. On the sidewalk, the restriping committee. I'm on that committee as a representative from the Heritage Commission. When is our next meeting? We need to query the board before then, before Friday.
We can do a poll.
Do a poll.
You just reach out to me.
Yep, I'll send you what information that they're discussing that's going to have an impact.
Does that mean we need to use old paint?
No.
With lead.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead and state your name, please, for the record.
Mr. Baldwin, Senior. The bid goes out March first.
April first. You mean from the state?
May first, excuse me.
Okay.
I was just saying we missed them both.
Get that right. And so, yes, there's a hurry, but they've got to select papers, etc., in that time period. So, that being said, I talked with Jeff North this afternoon, and he's on a plane on his way back and understands.
Yep, you called me in here. You're on that committee, by the way.
Excuse me?
You're on that committee.
I am.
You volunteered, didn't you?
I did.
You let your name down somewhere last meeting?
Damn me. He's got eight, so I guess my resignation, seven is enough. You're one odd number anyways, right?
You should have.
Yeah. So, but no, I'll...
All right. Anything else since, uh, striping of pavement? All right.
I did want to make to chairman, I noticed that you have moved open forums after informational and action items?
Yes, we did that last week.
For any specific reason?
Uh, pleasure of the board to do things in that order.
Okay, thank you.
Vehicle access to the common. In your packet, you have the, I guess, the contract we have for people having events on the common. There's been some concern, I guess, with Apple Pie Craft Fair, that people feel they need to be able to drive on the common for that. We have an opinion as to how we want to enforce that or such?
You're talking Section 3, Paragraph 8, no vehicles are permitted anywhere on the common, only foot traffic will be allowed on the common?
Right, right. And I guess, Hunter, we had heard from the Library Arts Center that they feel that their vendors need to be able to drive onto the common, set up, then drive off, and then at the end of the day, drive back on to load up, and then drive off again.
That's my understanding, yes.
And it's a concern if their vendors can't do that.
That's what they have told us, yes. And that objective or that goal is incompatible with the direction I got with the strike boards, so rather than, you know, waste all the time, I recommended that you all take some direct ownership.
We've always allowed some access onto the common for wheel vehicles in one fashion, whether to set up or drop off a tent or stock a booth. You know, I think the only thing that this board has been concerned about has been where they're accessing the town common. And it's where all the trees are parked along the Park Street side. And I think we discussed about coming in from the north end, just giving them a different option so they could decrease the amount of compaction of the soil around the roots of the trees. So, I don't think we've said that they've worked on however. Just where.
Thing is, if we have however many vendors all driving in and out that same path, we'll probably end up with some ruts in there by the end of the day. I mean, I don't think I've ever been around watching them set up for the Apple Pie Craft Fair, but generally for Farmers Market, people would have booths along the Main Street there manage to do it from the curb. And I think a lot of the ones on the Park Street side, they park on that side and then set up, but they manage without carrying things in. So... Have we had a lot of damage with the Apple Pie Festival?
Well, I mean, the whole common gets filled and trampled for the whole day. I mean, it's sort of...
To me, the only time we've had damage of any great extent was this year with the...
With a carnival.
With a carnival. But I haven't... not that I go look, because I don't, but it doesn't seem to me that we've had problems in the past with that.
And also the...
I think we should encourage people to, you know, if you can bring it in, bring it in. But in some cases, with the Apple Pie Festival, you know, the people have to be able to get on on the thing.
Most of the visible damage along the Park Street is from soil erosion from the water and from rain and everything, because there's not a lot of drainage on Park Street. Most of it just drains up, drains up under the common.
Yeah.
It's what you can't see. It's the soil compaction around the roots and any damage to the roots that are exposed above ground right now. That's... that can do a lot of damage to the tree.
Yes, babe, state your name, please.
Yes, Margaret Coulter, representing Road to Independence, but also I have a letter from Kate Nively that was correspondence to Hunter. She couldn't be here this evening, so I offered to read it.
Okay, we've received that.
Yeah, we have.
Oh, you did receive it, okay.
Of course.
Okay, I wasn't sure...
Did you want to read it into the record tonight?
Sure. Hello, Hunter. The Arts Center is hopeful to be involved in discussions of this, as barriers would make it impossible to host the Apple Pie Craft Fair on the town common, which would be a huge loss to the community. We could not possibly do the event if cars cannot drive onto the common to unload and pack up with 130-plus vendors. There's just no way we could unload from the side of the common. It would be a bottleneck nightmare, but it would force us to move the event. This would be a shame, as the event draws thousands to a town in a way that shows Newport in its best light. Also, any type of barrier would make it hard for things like food trucks, where event goers are expected to step up to the curb from the common to get food. Food trucks have been a huge help to developing more community events with good food options. I would hate for us to lose the ability to do this by creating a physical barrier that would make this difficult. I see the need to protect the roots of the trees, but I also see the need to keep vibrant community traditions and events growing and thriving. The common is such a resource for the town, and hate to see us limit its use by using resources to create a physical barrier that would make it harder to use the space. Creation of physical barriers to protect the tree roots would limit when a carnival is used and set up farmers market, concert in the common, set up in food sales, group fest set up and food trucks, community block party set up, and Road to Independence program, which is an incredible asset to the town, and the Apple Pie Craft Fair, to name a few. Thanks for listening, and thank you, Kate. And I guess I would say, from the perspective of Road to Independence, we have parked our truck and trailer on the common for 11 years to work out of our trailer so that folks can see the donkeys. Granted, we're a rural community, but there are lots of people who've never seen livestock. And for our participants to lead them around the common, it is a vital piece for us. We would not be able to participate in the farmers market if we couldn't access the common. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Earl.
Thank you. So, I'm here because of the statement in January 16th minutes relative to the farmers market, but it begs the question. The motion was to waive the rental fee, hold $150 security deposit, and revise the common rental agreement to Change 3A to state that only foot traffic will be allowed on the common. In addition, Town Manager Reeseburg was directed to erect an approved physical barrier at the edge of the pavement. It begs the question, is this just for the farmers market? Is this a permanent change? And if it's a permanent change, I brought with me the history of changes on the common. I have read 10 years of town reports, and I have here for you the information on how you make changes on the common. So, my first question is, is this specific to the farmers market? Is it a temporary barrier only for the farmers market? Or is it intended to be a permanent barrier on the common?
Let's say it's meant to be a permanent barrier on the common.
Okay. So, in 1975, there was an article in the Town Line, and the article was, "To see if the town will vote to direct that the selectmen submit any plans for major changes to the Newport common to the vote of the people of Newport at town meeting," that being the legislative body.
When was that being?
1975. The result of that vote is that... the right order here. The result of the vote was that... somewhere here. Anyway, it passed.
Okay.
And I have it here, but I'm sorry, it's not in the correct order. Oh, well, here it is. "On a motion by Dorothy Bartholomew and duly rescinded, it was voted that the town direct that the selectmen submit any plans for major changes to the Newport common to the vote of the people of Newport at town meeting." That has never been rescinded, and that means major changes. Putting up a permanent barrier on the common is, in fact, a major change. There are also two more examples of when it was put to the voters to make changes on the common. One was around the erection of the memorial, the veterans' memorial. There were some around the Conservation Commission erecting or taking down trees. And then there was, there were two votes around curbing around the Little Common because of the proximity to the Big Common. And all of those were submitted to the legislative body, i.e. town meeting. So, any major changes such as that has to go to the vote of the people. And it's also in the historic district. So, you need to come to the Heritage Commission before you make changes in the historic district. But our greater import is that it has to go to the voters. So, I am happy to share this packet with you. I could make a copy for you, but having read 10 years of town reports, that has never been rescinded.
Bert, you have a hand up.
Yep. I want to, I want to put this in a, in a different light. I would like to recommend that you eliminate parades. You have to reroute traffic. That disturbs people. You have to put up with all of what's going on and et cetera, so on and so forth, and it is a disruption. But when the parade is gone, the road is still there. So, wait a minute now. What are you really doing? Are you accommodating a community to do its things? Or are you making it, narrowing things down to the point? What is more successful in town import than the things that happen on that common? Yes, the opera house. What else? So, I don't understand. There's irradiators for fixing the problem of impacting around trees and grass. There's a rake that can ruffle things up and seed that can be spread. You want to contain that and have people love their stuff? Well, some of that stuff is heavy, some is easy. Accommodate, not regulate. It's just, to be, it's ludicrous to infringe upon some of the jewels of the community in that, in any manner. Let them be.
Do you want us to vote on parades?
No, but I want you to be embarrassed.
I just think that was good information. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir, state your name, please.
Doug Green. The question I have is, has anybody talked to any landscapers or anything like that and put down lawn mats for driving over by the trees? Or take the compression right off the trees and stop the disturbance over there? You know, four, five, maybe six different mats will make a nice landing into the green and take off the impact by the trees.
That's exactly what we were frozen to do, was to stop the traffic over the trees, but not disbar all traffic, right? So, certainly, the Apple Pie Craft Fair and every other event, every other donkey that wants to walk on the common could still park and do so, but they wouldn't be able to drive on through the trees. All we're doing is protecting the tree area, allowing traffic to come onto the common from the north end, and they can drive all the way up to the information booth if they so needed to, but just changing from where they were driving onto the common from, to protect the trees. So, we didn't have to put a whole bunch of money into fixing around the trees constantly or having to worry about that issue. So, Biddy's point, I think, is well, to take it, you know, without the history, and I don't know about the rest of you, but I wasn't off to that old in 1975.
You were not.
To know that that was the thing, you know, was certainly...
I was.
Then what were you...
But you weren't here.
I wasn't here.
So, that's the point, is that we were just trying to protect the common from meaningful damages that we wouldn't have to expend taxpayer money on, unnecessary fixes, but still allow the common to be used, as it always was, and our parades too, because we're going to have them.
Jim, the noise of the gun going off, but you get to shoot the gun. So, you'd eliminate the noise.
Well, we can, we don't have to go to town vote to have the contract the way it is. We can leave it the way it is and have foot traffic, period.
It wasn't...
But that's not the point.
The point is the event.
Yeah.
And probably the event brings more money into the community than the trees will probably take in 50 years.
It'll come all down.
No, no. That's, that's taking it to a further irrational decision. Leave it as it...
That's the point I was making. State your name, please.
Wayne Boydman.
Thank you.
If you pay attention down there during the winter, and I'm sorry for the people that live down there, but they, even the post office push all their snow onto the common. Okay? And I just watched the guys down there raking so hard to try to clean up the common, and that doesn't, you know, the salt and everything pushed earlier, that doesn't do those trees any good. So, somebody needs to speak to the people down through there, you know, whoever's plowing the yards down there.
See, that's one advantage of some sort of curbing on that side of the street that would limit the ability to...
No, you just speak to the people and say, you can't push snow across the street. That's illegal anyway, right, Jim?
At least it leaves still behind.
Yeah. You had your hand up first?
Yes, I just, so the drive, there are very few people who actually can drive onto the common under the tree because the tree branches are so low. So, most access comes above those trees anyway.
Below.
Or, well, yes, depending on which way, but it's more from the monument and above. That's how we access. So, you don't come all the way from the end and trailer all the way around and make...
Too good if you needed to.
You could, I feel that makes more, more damage, potential damage to the grass. I originally thought that was the issue, was the grass, but I don't know if it's not. But, so the trees, not many people drive, can drive in there because the branches are so low. So, that sort of takes care of itself as access to driving in, because nobody's trucked whatever.
But I'm hearing we can't put up a barrier.
A permanent barrier.
Permanent barrier. Well, you, you did say earlier it was going to be permanent.
Yes, but we, they have temporary permanent barriers.
A rose is not a rose, right, Jeffrey?
Like a Jersey berry.
In 1989, Article 37 was, "To see if the town will vote to adopt the following ordinance: Heavy machinery and heavy mechanisms will not be driven or parked on the common. RVs and passenger cars may remain parked on the common throughout the duration of flea markets and other similar activities." That article was passed over, which means neither of those things were approved or not approved, but that article was passed over, so there was no action taken in 1989.
Back when you did all your town business in one city.
Exactly.
Go there.
So, the issue has certainly arisen, but the construction of a quote "barrier" is really contrary to the will of the town. The tree issue is an interesting one, and Margaret is right. Her vehicles could never go through the trees. I think, if I think about, who parks on the edge when they're unloading? It's passenger cars. If I'm unloading for the farmers market, for example, to set up my booth, my passenger car is on the edge, and I'm right close to the trees because I'm only walking through. So, my car's not on the common, but it is on the common. It's on the area that you're most concerned about. So, I think if there were some adjustment to the farmers market contract or to the other contracts, which you issue, I assume, to like the Beer Fest and some of those others, that all will stay on Park Street. And maybe, which is, probably will make people insane, but maybe for the day of the event, Park Street is closed from X to X so that people can unload, and then it's reopened again. I don't know what kind of hardship that would cause. I suspect it would cause quite a bit, but I think there is a workaround without erecting a barrier. And I don't know, Mr. Rings, I'm not familiar with his suggestion of mats. I mean, that's certainly nothing I would know about, but that might be a solution, but you still then have people parking on the mats, so I don't know if you've accomplished your, your goal.
What's the direction of the board here?
I just have a comment.
Yep.
If I recall that conversation from January correctly, most of that conversation centered around granite curbing along Park Street. And there was some discussion about drainage from Park Street, which obviously you would have to make spaces within the curbing for the drainage to run off into the common, because that's where a lot of goes. And then there was some other, further conversation about maybe a curbing or a section, an opening where there may be access to the common, and also the runoff area, another section of curbing, just to limit everybody going on the common everywhere. And it would just restrict some of the traffic flow onto the common in that area.
But if you do curbing, that's a significant change to the common, and that's a vote of the legislative body.
Is that a change to the common or change to the vote?
Depends on where it is. If it doesn't touch the common, but because it's a historic district, you've got to get through them too. And there are two examples here of quote "curbing" around the Little Common that the town voted on. They voted both of them because it was legitimate reasoning, and I'm not saying that people wouldn't, but they have to be given the opportunity with a, with good clear explanation and to make sure that it did not limit access to the common. It's an, it's an interesting conundrum, because on the west side, we don't seem to have that problem. It's only on the east side.
Less curbing on the east side?
Like zero.
Doug?
Question is, how deep is curbing there? Do you plan on putting there?
We don't, we didn't firm up any, on it.
There's nothing decided.
Didn't really get into that.
If you go more than four inches, you're hitting roots.
Oh, you mean how deep?
Yeah.
You can look at the root, you don't have to go four inches. You can see them.
So, my point, my opinion, if you start digging up the road through there for the curbing, you're going to kill the trees anyways.
I think the solution is almost rather easy. We can, we can certainly amend the contract or the agreement, and in the application, talk about, you can access, yes or no, box checked, and so many other boxes we can check. And then if that is the case, then like the Apple Pie Craft Fair does, they come to us, the farmers market, they come to us for the agreement for the year, and we simply dictate to them how we want them to access the common. And what we're going to allow for them to access the common. In the rental agreement, which I think we could do outside of town meeting, because it's not a change to the physical common, it's changing how we're accessing it. So, we can amend that in the application, and just, we as a board, and whatever the board sits at that time, can dictate how they access it.
But I want to make sure you still have access, I'm going to be honest with, with the group here. But I, I've known your group for a long time. Respect what you do, and I don't want...
I guess it would have to go back to, so, the farmers market, he came to me and said that we would not be able to have access to the common.
Who, who did?
Richard, the head of the Newport...
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you.
Because he was told here that there would be no access. So, he would have to be told so he could tell me, or I could tell him, if you all say that yes, now I have access. Because at this moment in time, I'm told I cannot access the common per his agreement, his contract. Has he signed it?
I think he did. Because he found out he didn't have to pay, because he'd already paid earlier. Yeah. I'll repeat again, I want you to have access. Your, what you do with those kids, what you do with the donkeys, and the bread you make that I buy every week, anyway, we need to maintain that. That's part of the, what we do.
I thought we talked about that, that January meeting, about the fact that we were going to restrict on and off access around the trees, but we were not going to be closing it off to all traffic. That that north end was going to be left open so that people setting up big tents could drive out, drop off the tent, people that had donkey trails could drive onto the common and thing for that event. There are occasions when people need to access the common for whatever reason.
Plus, we've also asked...
I didn't think we were limiting it 100 percent, that we were just changing the area of them. I believe we talked about at some point about the barriers were going to be granite marker posts, you know, strategically placed to deter people from driving on or driving through that area.
Yeah, or through store.
Right.
Okay, I just have one. The preliminary thought was just put those at strategic locations. Basically, probably the easiest way to describe it would be at the drip line, at the edge of the drip line of the trees. So, that's generally where the ascent of the root system as well. So, you've got a granite post, a tree, and a granite post that would discourage you from coming too close, and it would just be on the side of Park Street side, but not around the entire.
The trees that we lost really didn't have anything to do with... The trees that we lost really didn't have anything to do with cars driving.
No.
It was aging through the process. So, the issue, part of the issue though is, I mean, we do spend a fair amount of money cleaning up that common. But money well spent when you take a look at what happens on that common.
So, if I have permission, so the letter that Richard sent to me on January 22nd says, Newport Select Board has banned all vehicles from the grass on the common. They, they still think we are the cause of the grass not going on the coast office side next to the roadway. But I thought if you ask for special dispensation for the donkeys and such, they would be allowed to bring the trailer on the green for this year's market. They're such a nice attraction to have at the market. So, that was his understanding of, of the deal.
Mine also. What's that?
She's allowed.
We were going to allow, you know, the idea was to deter everybody from just really nearly driving on it and being a little bit more controlled about who, where.
We've, we've asked the police and they, they try the best they can to tell people...
Yes, they come through.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if you did in fact amend the agreement, you did in fact restrict it to only foot traffic. And that's not what we're talking about now. So, if Mr., what's his name, signed an agreement that said only foot traffic, that's what he believes. And he's suggesting that, Lord of the Independents asks for a waiver, you know, how many farmer's market people are you going to come in here saying, I need a waiver to bring my goods in? I need a waiver to bring my tent in? I need a waiver? If you in fact added that to the agreement, then it says only foot traffic allowed on the common. It doesn't say any exceptions. And I don't have the agreement, so I don't know what you did, but it passed five to nothing. So, one can assume that it, which is always a danger, that it was added to the agreement. And that's a separate conversation coming, erecting barriers.
It's a pleasure of the board as far as a waiver for the donkeys on the common.
Oh, I'd be very much in favor of that.
Yeah, I mean, as far as people who want to drive onto the common to set up their, you know, tent and wares for farmer's market, you know, the people on the park street side tend to pull over onto the, under the trees there, unload right there. And that's part of the problem affecting the trees. People pile up over there and that's what we're, part of what we're trying to eliminate. You know, they should park on the other side of the street. I mean, the people that set up on the main street side of the common for farmer's market, they'd never seem to need to drive onto the common to set up their wares. But a case of bringing the donkeys on, you know, it's a special attraction, it has special needs and such, I mean, certainly that's different than setting up your little, you know, tent and your tables underneath.
When you bring the donkeys onto the common, do you park around the monuments or south of monuments, north of the monuments?
I come, I'm, I'm this side. So, is that south?
This is south.
I'm south of the monument because we tried, when there were more booths at the common, they didn't want us really close to the monument. So, we come in, now there's a bench and a, there's, there's one spot I can get in beyond the trees and I pull in and back up so that I'm this side of the monument. So, that in my eyes, it's the least impact I have on the common. When I leave, I drive straight out to the other end of the common to, comment, comment to drive down.
I just wonder would it be a hardship? I don't know how they set up normally, but if you were to park by the main monument, come in from the north end and park by the main monument, maybe facing, and do you, when you take the donkeys out, you put them in a pen, right?
No.
No.
I drop the back and I have gates so people can lock up the ramp, see the donkeys, and then we bring them off and walk them around the common. So, I'm usually the last on that park street side. I'm the end of the row because my truck and trailer would block anyone that was beyond me. So, I'm the end cat.
So, you're not really, I'm sure, I mean, you're, you're close to monuments.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah. I don't know how the llamas get on the common, however. I don't know. She puts them in a van and they just come out of the van. So, she can park, she usually parks in the, across the street because they fold, they just come at the end.
I don't know too much about llamas. I, I had donkeys myself. I know they're not very sure footed on pavement, but...
Llamas are a little easier.
Llamas, I think they're a little easier. I think they have softer clothes or something.
So, we work out of the truck and trailer. That's, that's part of the whole. I don't have the portable fencing. I mean, that would make it too much to try and do all that. So, we just work out of there.
Do you want to make a motion to grant a waiver for the donkeys? Just so we...
And then we can...
It is a greater issue than just the donkeys.
Right, but then we need to move on to addressing the unloading and loading. Do you want to wait and try and do it all in one? Make the motion that we allow the, what is it?
The Road Independent.
Road Independent to be able to come in and just pay on the commons the way they always have.
Jeff, you're going to come up with the same thing and have to apply fast?
We're, we're, we're going to move on to that next.
All of the events.
Yeah. Can I second?
Well, I don't, for sake of discussion, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
You need the broadnet to cover all, all the events or...
I don't think we're prepared tonight to be able to come up with a solution that's going to answer our needs for farmer's market completely. Apple Pie Craftery, Beer Fest, things of that sort, that does require some access. Out of a common, we'll see that some access at the same time as we do our due diligence to protect our asset.
Yeah.
Is probably a discussion for another night. We'll be more prepared. I don't mind granting this waiver now, but I, I feel like we're going to fix it in a future meeting. Well, we could fix it later, so we want to spend the next half an hour in, in formulating a, a solution, but I don't think we're fully prepared to wrap our head around that and do something meaningful. This is not going to get us in 1975 hot water.
Right.
So, I think we should just, while I agree that we can make the waiver for the, for this situation, I think there's a real solution.
She needs to let him know that...
Yeah. This is not, this is not the end of the discussion, discussion address this.
I think the farmer's market date's open.
With all due respect, Mr. Connell, it is not Margaret's responsibility to let the farmer's market director know. It is yours because he signed your document and then told his vendors there was only foot traffic. So, you need to let him know, not you personally, but you, the town.
Thank you. Which goes to my greatest... We need a solution that's going to be broader, not, not making people come every single time they want to drive on the common in front of this board.
Any other discussion on this motion? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining?
Abstaining. You were for it?
I, I was, I said aye.
All right.
I'm going to follow up with the second motion that we, on the next agenda, have a solution to this. We're discussing.
Thank you. We know it won't be barriers though.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay.
Thank you, Biddy, for bringing us the history lesson. Always much appreciated.
Oh, I have more, don't worry. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll be addressing the concerns of Apple Pie Craftery at the next meeting, but we are working on trying to create a solution.
I would just say all of it because the Boo Fest, you know, the food trucks...
Right. It's, it's, yes.
List it as Newport Common Event.
There you go.
Yeah. Okay. Community Power Coalition Public Hearing Informational Meeting Date, April 25th, 2023. There was a, the first public hearing on this was last week on the 10th. It was a fair turnout. A lot of questions were asked, a lot of questions were answered. The second public hearing on this will be next Tuesday in, in this room at 6:30, the 25th. And there's information on our website concerning the proposal.
Yes.
All right.
All the information that's been provided publicly today is on our website.
Okay. I encourage people to look into it. It's a power cost saving, I guess, buying group that applies to residential and businesses if they're interested in Newport.
Yeah, I would encourage people to show up because he does a very good job in presenting all the facts.
Yep.
And taking questions and dealing with that. Because I had some very concerns about the opt-out issue. He, he was able to talk us through that process.
Is that information on our website currently? Sorry? Is that information on our website currently?
All the information that appeared at last week's meeting is on our website. I haven't gone through letter by letter, but that was the direction and that's what it was.
It is good information, an opportunity for the residents to have the opportunity to save some money and...
Yeah.
They don't do enough of that.
Newport is one of 34 communities in the state either starting the program this spring or looking at starting it next year.
Jeff?
Yes.
How many of the public showed up for the first meeting?
I think we pretty much filled all the seats.
Excuse me?
I think we filled pretty much all the seats right here.
Maybe at three.
Thirty-ish.
Three.
Three?
About all I saw. I didn't see, I didn't see...
In the same room?
I didn't see that, that was filled by any stretch of the imagination.
I'm bad, I was thinking of a different meeting then. You must have been.
Is it also on Zoom?
So, wait a minute, I'm, I'm somewhere between 30 and three.
There you go.
You're closer at three.
If I went to school, it, it didn't go that way. It didn't go three, 30, 50, 60, 48, 70. So...
They did after you left.
Oh, they changed, they changed after.
Morris says we had four, so I was close.
All right, then I would like to speak to this.
Okay.
To the, to the public, at least entertain it. It is a way to save money on your power bill and at least entertain it and listen and make your own decision. That's all you're asking for. And so, that being said, I, I don't know why the, the time wouldn't be found. I didn't find time, but I will for this next one.
Okay.
Is it on Zoom as well?
It's on NCTV.
Live, but...
We do Zoom it because he, he came in.
Yeah, but we didn't record that. I'm told that NCTV recorded it and I'm told I had not personally verified that they have it available for, for public review.
It was an interesting meeting, even though there were 31 people here.
There were some good questions.
Very good questions.
And good discussions.
Yeah, it was a good meeting.
All right. All right, poll coverage for town meeting, May 9th.
I'll go eight to four.
All right, eight to four. Am I allowed to participate?
No.
Yes, you are. Wait a minute, wait on.
You can be outside the rope area. As a selectman, you can be outside the rope area, but generally it's better to do a pro temp. You cannot come in and count.
Okay, I, I gotta, I gotta get into this for a moment here. I called Lee this afternoon to find out what the real rules were as they pertain to people who are running and people who are there as whatever. And I was told you can do anything that you normally have done, except for you can't count ballots. And so, Virginia, I think that's the limit.
Except that you should be outside the rope area as a selectman. So, you're at the door, you're greeting people, you're not in behind the roped area. So, that's, that's consistent with what you said, except that where it's done is the issue. So, he could appoint you pro temp and you can go, you can do anything because you're not, oh, no, you can't, you're on the ballot. Oh, right. So, you can be, you have no, no authority at the moment because you haven't been appointed to something. So, you have to be outside the roped area, outside of the voting area. Barry and Herb can do their duty outside the roped area.
And, and their...
Mr. Ring cannot be there.
And their duty inside, except that they cannot count ballots.
Well, the...
So, if they're picking, if they're making sure the pens are in the, in the booths...
No, they cannot. They have to be only outside the roped area. I can pull a law up for you if you want, but...
It makes sense that that's caught back with voting process.
Exactly.
The only time we can be within the roped area is when we're voting.
Okay. I thought the same as you people, but I talked to the lord here in the other room. So, Virginia, you have to find that out so that those can. My understanding was the rope was not a, a barrier for an elected official who's on a ballot and is there because you've got to hold the quorum and...
And they do that by appointing pro temps.
Right.
Yes, and you can do the pro temp. Well, that person can. That's the law.
Right.
What we need to, we need to make it clear because I was surprised at the answer, but...
And we'll clarify it for sure.
Okay.
We'll clarify it.
All right. Doug?
For the, for the state, what I was told, regulation that differs a little bit, that if you're sitting on the board now and you're up for reelection, the only thing you can't count is that position.
That's not true.
That's what they told me at the state.
Well, it's all on the same ballot, so...
Oh, okay, so that's the...
Right, it's just one sheet. It's no purpose.
And the only other thing is you can't be shaking hands at the door, trying to get re-voted. You have to be a select person. You can't be, if you're going to do that, you have to be on the max seven of the rope, outside and, and can't go for votes there.
You can electioneer.
Right. But it is definitely, you do, like she said, you got to have your quorum because they, you know, do your regular jobs.
Can I wear a Barry Connell T-shirt?
Yes, you can now.
I can now.
You can't do that now?
You can do that now. Yes, you can.
The girl who took her, they came in with a, a top on and they told her that she couldn't be there with it. She picked it off and continued to vote.
Hey, that works.
Hunter? Just for your further deliberations, I'd like to tell you that once again, I don't want you to just spend an entire day if you choose to put, uh, a plan in this.
And I'm planning to be there the entire day also, so. I'll be there after 3:00.
You can put me down from 8:00 to 1:00.
Okay.
That works, okay.
I have to go work.
Sorry, Larry, you said?
After 3:00.
Doug, if we get a quorum, I'm going to stand outside the vote.
If you need me, I can do anytime. It's like to me, we need one, one more person for you. Larry, just Larry. Larry, just down the other way.
Yeah, Larry's pretty good about that.
Bert, do you want to do it?
No.
He can't, he's on the ballot.
So... He could be a pro temp.
He can.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Wait, I don't understand.
I don't either, I don't know.
Whose place is he taking?
Could be Jim, could be anybody.
Right, but you just need to...
Can make it a quorum.
I likely will stay all day too.
So, three of five is a quorum?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
The law states...
We have another meeting to fill this out.
Right, Jeff, one moment.
Okay.
The law is clear that a selectman who decides not to be an elected official at that time, going home for lunch as an example, can turn and appoint another person. He does that, meaning you, 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 a selectman can do that. Doesn't have to be done here. I don't have to be. If Barry said to me, Bert, I'm going home for lunch and I'm there, I'll be there all day, and said that, I become him for that time, for that time period. And the statute is clear on that.
But you have to be sworn in.
Right.
Yeah, I sworn last year.
You have to be sworn in every time.
He could be an election official.
Only outside the barrier, again, doing the job of a selectman outside the barrier.
Yeah, just like me, yeah, yeah.
So you, Mr. Sayer, and you, Jim, and you, Jeff, can walk around and fill the pens and pick up the litter and do whatever. Herb, Barry, and, um, Bert, and Mr. Ring, Mr. Ring's not included in this at the moment because nobody asked you to be a pro temp.
You can volunteer.
Uh, you can volunteer outside the roped area.
Good. Bert, what's your size for shirt on the wall?
Excuse me?
What's your t-shirt?
What does it say?
Vote for Connell.
That's right. Now talk about it.
Now, let me clarify one thing because Barry is very good at greeting people at the door. Can he continue to do that?
Yes, he certainly can.
Just as long as you don't, he doesn't say, "Vote for me."
Correct.
Can he wear a t-shirt that says, "Vote for me"?
No.
I won't, don't worry.
No.
He can.
I don't wear t-shirts.
It's dicey because it's very hard to be an election official and be on the ballot.
I have no.
As I am well aware, the number of times somebody said, "What is she doing at the ballot box?" I'm the moderator, why I'm there, but.
The person who's running for reelection cannot politic out there either.
Right, but I can greet them, welcome.
Yes, yes, you can greet, yes. Where I'm out there, I can say, "Vote for Barry."
Outside the door, you can.
Please do.
Yeah.
Yeah, outside the door of the gym, as long as you're in the 10-foot barrier.
Outside that door, my First Amendment overrides everything that all of these people think that they can put on.
Oh, absolutely. As long as you're in the 10-foot barrier, you can say and do whatever you'd like.
Yes.
Oh, God.
Are you sure of that?
You heard it here first.
Let me, let me write that down.
Yeah, so I'm more like, okay.
I'll be there.
Yeah, but you see, you can't count and counting has become a lot more.
It's more important.
Yeah, I'm so happy I can't.
More important and more detailed than it had been and we're still learning.
Once, once the supervisors know you're, who's available, you, 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 although you're not there for counting, then they will fund people to come in and do the counting.
Okay, good. All right.
Because Bill Willnot can't count either because he's running for trustee of the trust fund.
The library trustee or something?
No, trustee of the trust fund.
Okay.
I'm gonna stop letting people run for office. New people.
Yeah, but I will, I will say this, you know, with elections and, the people that volunteer to work, a selectman, pro temp, or work the polls, registering people, counting afterwards, it's all very important.
So important.
And they do, they do a real job and important to what goes on.
Jeff? Yes, that's not so, and I'm, I say this as humor. Uh, the first time I was asked to count was two elections ago or something, and in my first 25 pile, and we had 23. At that point, I was semi-disqualified. They watched me real close. So the guy who counts the beans can't count.
All right, no action items. Moving on, open forum, opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to address the board to do so now. Yes, ma'am, in the back, who state your name, please?
I can. My name is Sharon Urban, I live at 101 Laurel Street. I'd like to give you a copy of my remarks so that you can follow along or so that at least they're in the record accurately.
Make sure Laura gets the copies.
I am going, I have copies for Mr. Reesburg and for Laura. You're welcome. Um, I would like to say that the pleasure of the board to hold this at the end of the meeting makes it very difficult for me as a grandmother who has a seven-year-old to go home and get to bed, but be that as it may, it is your pleasure. Dear members of the Newport Board of Selectmen and Town Manager Reesburg, I wish to follow up on the deliberative session of April 4th with points of both gratitude and concern. Thank you very much for the hard work of identifying and obtaining grants to reduce the tax burden for the sewage treatment plant upgrade from $23,500,000 to $9,999,000. That is amazing. The deliberative session discussion was about the increase in cost to an average 2.4 member residential household. Prior to the vote on May 9th, I think it would be helpful to let the Newport taxpayers know the following. Are there retail, industrial, and municipal users who will share in these costs? Are their rates going up as well? What percent of the budget do they contribute? Next point, what is the fee when septicage is dumped at the treatment plant? Does it go to the sewer fund? Are these fees going up? What percent of the budget are they? I would encourage you to put together a working group to consider the fee structure as the actual funding of the upgrade begins. I understood that day that that can be done, we need to get this voted, but then there might be an opportunity to look at that. My next area of concern is, thank you very much for the hard work of identifying and obtaining grants so that new community recreation center is not being funded through the tax base. Based on remarks at the 46th School Board meeting, I believe there are still some funds needed. Over a year ago, my husband and I set aside a modest amount in anticipation of fundraising for the center. We have inquired about how to contribute but have never received information. We do senior fitness and have a grandson who will attend day camp. Here is a pledge from us and a check will be forthcoming when you tell us how to do it. I would encourage you to allow interested citizens to participate in this worthwhile project. Finally, I am concerned about the bus garage situation. To the members of the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager, I say evicting the buses and bus drivers is unacceptable. Safety checks on buses and their fitness for work are essential and cannot be accepted outside in inclement weather on bare ground. The school bus drivers are important to the safety and well-being of the children of Newport and should be treated with the same respect paid to other town employees. At the deliberative session, several people spoke to the idea of community. How will there be evidence of actual cooperation and collaboration between the School Board, Board of Selectmen, Superintendent of Schools, and Town Manager on behalf of the taxpayers who fund both the school and the town? I'm hoping to see evidence of cooperation prior to the town meeting so that I may decide whether to support or oppose Article 21. Sincerely, Sharon Urban, Newport taxpayer.
All right, let me speak to your number four briefly about cooperation and collaboration between the town and the school district. This afternoon, there is a meeting between Town Manager, the Superintendent, two members of the School Board, and two selectmen concerning a land swap we're working on so that the school has a clear, say, right and title to put their agricultural building up and also looking at a solution to its bus storage. Those, that work is ongoing, but there was that meeting today. Keith and Jim represented the Board of Selectmen at that meeting, so, and that works.
I'm glad to hear that, and I had read the article in the newspaper about the potential for the land swap, and I am vigilantly culling the papers to see what I can find that shows that this town recognizes that I, as a taxpayer, pay both the school budget and the town budget and would like to see solutions that are beneficial.
Yeah, solutions of being worked on on the land swap, I mean, at this point, our primary thing is we're waiting for word back from the State Department of Environmental Services to see if putting a recreational field that crosses within the boundary for the new well is acceptable. You know, basically getting a waiver to allow that to happen.
That's four and three.
And three, okay.
Two, I think Hunter can probably speak there.
Hunter, you wanna pass out of the Hunter?
Yeah, the, uh, if you accept the engineer architectural estimate of the project as being accurate, we are 100% funded, presuming that our last grant application is approved, which we are hopeful and believe it will be, will be 100% funded. Asterisk, we don't know what the actual construction number is until the bids are all received, so that number might go a little higher, might go a little lower, it's impossible to know. The most recent estimated engineer's project cost, I believe, is two weeks old, so how accurate it may be is yet to be determined, but it's not six months old. It should be more likely to be less accurate, so we are fully funded as to the facts and situation as we understand it today. Um, we have a rather extensive list of donors, contributors, however you want to refer to them, as well over 100, and we have said to anyone, but I've had any query from, when to submit their, their donations. We have suggested to them that they hold off until those, that budget is finalized and clear and it sounds ready to sign a contract. At that point, um, we ask people to then make their donations, because we don't want to give back, have to spend a lot of time giving my back.
I didn't write you a check.
Okay.
Because, because of that.
Same reason, yeah. So we have our round numbers, uh, round numbers, a $9 million project, we have $9 million pledged, we have about, best of my recollection, we have about 600 in cash from agencies. We wanted to make usually larger sources and want to make donations at particular time for tax purposes, and all the rest of it is either pledged or committed by, you know, for instance, US Rural Development hasn't sent us a check yet because we're finishing out the last, last few items, environmental level-one reviews, which actually I think were cleared, but all the work was done, but the reports haven't been finished like for last week, so coming down to the final steps, and USRVA hasn't received their authorization to start sending out, um, funds yet, but we expect that in May or June. But many, it's a little difficult to nail these down because this is the first time many of these agencies have done this, uh, because the, in that particular instance, the congressional remarks, it's the first time they've, they've had those in decades, so the current staff is not really clear as to the process, procedures, and they're evolving as we move forward. But we're in, we're in good shape presuming that the projected budget turns out to be accurate.
And it's good for that to become part of the record of this meeting, and my point is that there are folks who want to support this.
I think it would be appropriate for the board to thank the Urbans for their pledge tonight.
But, you know, there's just little, I mean, there, a lot of small donors can make a difference.
Correct.
Absolutely.
And I have never seen that opportunity, even though I've asked many times. Go on, thought I would ask.
Can I ask?
Thank you.
Who did you ask for that?
Well, I asked members of the Recreation Advisory Committee, and I asked staff.
Feel free to call my office anytime you like, I'd be happy to give you a detailed analysis of where we are at any time.
Yeah, yeah, and that's the only one I needed.
Wayne Woodin.
Wayne, thank you.
I'd like to, you know, big with Jim, um, and a month now since I asked you, I asked about voting for that letter to go to Conkot for DOT, for K.A. Stevens. If I come back in two weeks and you turn around and says, "It's in a draft." Jim, you promised me it would be out in two days?
I did.
And, you know, I know, Herb voted no, Jeff didn't vote, I was, he voted, and Barry voted. Voted yes for it. So, you know, come on, uh, there's three out of five guys voted for, it should be sent. If he starts it, something's gotta be going here.
Can we fit, can we speak?
Yep.
Okay. It, it has taken some time to get through the evolution of that letter because there is five of us up here and we want to make sure that everybody had their opportunity.
Well, two didn't want to do nothing, Jim.
There's still five of us up, so it's taken some time. That letter was, the final draft was approved tonight, it's going out tomorrow. That's, here we are, it's going out tomorrow.
If it's approved, can we have?
If it's approved, get a copy of it for me?
I don't have a copy right now.
Oh, you can get it somewhere in the building here, just somebody walk upstairs and get it.
It is not right here in the building. It is not in.
On something electronic somewhere.
It is not in a condition to send out right now.
Not a public document.
Not a public document right now. It will be tomorrow.
Once it's sent out, it becomes public.
It will be tomorrow, by end of day.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Clues up the whole deal?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, my second question was, how come when that letter was sent, how come somebody isn't missing from the employment office here, you know, for being employed here? If Todd's name was on it, if he wrote it or he wrote it, who wrote the letter that went out? That first letter? I asked for that before too.
I think Mr. Parry's name was on that letter, is it not?
It is. It was typed on, yes.
The, the rest of that is personal matter, not for public discussion.
Well, why is my taxpayer still paying somebody in that gym? Jim, you feel the same way, you know, if you have a way around it? I'm, I'm sorry I have to be like this, but, you know.
Don't be sorry.
I got K.A. Stevens here and they're, they're very good friends of mine, and this letter is something that, I've been in business for years, I'm not in business now, you guys can't, you know, everybody jokes around, how come, you know, ask my son, "How's business up there now since your father's been going to the selectmen's meetings," you know, because it raises real pain. It doesn't make any difference because I don't have nothing to do with that place.
I would hope it makes no difference. It should make no difference.
Well, I think there is, there is, uh, there's a few things that goes on every now and then it comes out, but it make any difference. I'm gonna, you know, I stick up for people and I stick up for myself. It's just like, we need more police department, more officers in this town. With all the shootings and stuff that's going on all across the country, a sweet 16 birthday party, you know, just shooting down, this place, anybody could walk in here and take you guys out so fast as possible. I would duck, but, you know, really. It's, it's, this is probably the unsecuriest place there is in town. I get down to work at the school, least you have a door to ring and they check you before you even get in the building, you know.
There's a button in one of those drawers that get the police.
And by the time they come in, they take these guys out.
No, the police go the other way first of all.
Yeah, but really.
Mr. Ring, you were. I'd like to go back to the, uh, new brick facility, um, ask some questions.
You believe that?
Okay.
You believe that?
Um, I believe that last week I was told that all the bids were out, and I'll, yeah.
You looking at me?
No, I'm looking at the building.
No, the bids, the bids are not all out yet as I understand it. There's, there's a final thing being prepared, they're going out shortly.
Okay. I, I was just trying to clarify that from the last major, I'm pretty sure that was about the same answer. Uh, my second thing is I've done some research on parts and pieces.
On what?
Parts and pieces, like water lines, electrical panels, stuff like that, that are short in, in the country right now.
Yep.
What is the board and, uh, the town manager doing to push that issue to make this facility not be held up by a, a, a electrical panel that you can't get for a year from now? Or water lines and parts and pieces that you can't get?
Well, when the bids come in, it will basically have a price for it and basically a completion date, and I would assume that the people bidding on it have done the research of availability of electrical panels and such.
The, uh, the two week, the two weeks you gave in the bid?
No, two weeks until they're going out. I don't know what the turnaround is being.
Oh, I can tell. Oh, I can tell you right now if you want. It's out in public.
Okay.
It's two weeks.
All right.
You get, you get the bid out and then two weeks later it's due.
All right.
Two weeks to a multimillion dollar building, you give them two weeks in the middle of bidding, actually at the end of bidding season. And you're expecting the, you know, the best bids unless you already have somebody lined up or whatever, I don't know. But they should have been a long time ago. We're gonna fall short here. We're not getting the best for this facility that needs it.
We're gonna have to see what comes in.
I just, I'm just, I'm not happy with that answer. I just want you to know. If you're gonna do a project, you wanna make sure that everything's ready to go for these people that are bidding on it, you know, but that's not. And second of all, my other question is, we spent all this money, or wants to spend all this money on a new water system, definitely need it. I'm not disagreeing there. What are we doing about the old water system? How much money are we spending on the water and sewer every year to upgrade? Or are we just spending all of our money to a new facility?
No, we, basically, a few years ago, we approved a 1.1 million dollar bond, maybe 1.3 million dollar bond at a town meeting for upgrades to the water lines from coming down Unity Road. Along with that, we received another 600,000 or so, either congressional earmarks or to northern borders. So we basically have about $2 million of water work that should be starting this year. And we will be continuing to pursue other grants to continue work. I mean, that whole stretch of water lines is gonna cost probably dozens of millions of dollars to do. And it's being addressed as we can get money to do it and as we can afford to do it.
So how much pipeline do we have in stock?
I don't know. That's up to the contractor and that is something that is in short supply, so we're not gonna be able to do as much as we hope.
So the town is not grabbing that asset with some money and stockpiling it at our facilities? Because we get a better price than, than contractors do?
That I'm not aware of. I'll have to take your word for it. Mrs. Urban?
I wanted to go back to Mrs. Urban's comment and then I have one of my own. If I were to go on the town's website and look at the rec department, would it tell me how I can donate? I'm gonna tell you, the answer is no. And I have asked the same question for the past probably three years. It seems to me that a project of this magnitude really needs to be much more in the public eye. I don't know where, who the nine million dollar donors are, but yippee skippy that they're in this town. It's been very difficult to be supportive. I mean, I voted for it and I'll continue to vote for it because I believe in it. But, you know, there was a talk that was gonna be bricks, there was gonna be blah, 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 crickets. So, you know, at least the tech center sent out a nice brochure. They gave you an opportunity to have a wall named after you or whatever. I mean, they're very proactive about trying to get the money that they need and they still need money. It appears that, you know, we're sitting on file bit, so the rec center's gonna go through. So does it mean they buy, you know, a cheaper ball from China as opposed to a better ball from the U.S. of A if we add more donations? I mean, I think it's very short sighted on the part of the rec advisory board, I guess. I'm not gonna throw the director under the bus, but somebody's not paying attention.
There was a big push to get donors when we first proposed the center a few years.
Five years ago.
Maybe four, maybe five. But as to.
But no letters, no. It was just kind of a passing comment when we had a paper. Anyway, my other point of information is in 1975, the community received approval of grants from the Bureau of Outdoor Recreation in the amount of 112,853 dollars and funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for 137,000 dollars as well as 26,040 dollars. The funds are to be used for the creation of the quote, "Old Courthouse Common." The project includes the acquisition of seven parcels of property adjacent to the Old Grange Building, recently renovated for the district court, and a historical museum, demolition of seven of the buildings and restoration of the brick building located at 23 Central Street, relocation of the 12 families residing in the building, and installation of 85 parking spaces, and here's the issue, and a small park to be named Old Courthouse Common. Where is it? The project will not only help families relocate out of these dilapidated conditions, but help them with their rent payments as they're, at their new homes. It will also remove a tremendous eyesore from the heart of Newport's downtown area. This will provide a beautiful setting for our recently renovated district courthouse, now the Old Courthouse Restaurant, rejuvenate the downtown shopping and business area, provide off-street parking, and make a peaceful park available to our elderly citizens whose center is located right next door. That obviously changed. The project provides an excellent stepping stone for Newport's 1976 proposal to continue across Central Street and clean up the area along the Sugar River. This will provide an unsurpassable site for housing for the elderly, which is also being proposed for 1976. But what happened to the Old Courthouse Common?
And the 85 parking spots? I can't answer you. I was not here then.
I was.
So what happened?
I don't know.
Were you on the board that time?
No. I wasn't actually in Newport in 1975. If those were told, I was in Claremont. But I think it's the pad, the concrete padded area that the Old Courthouse was intent up. But apparently there was a significant amount of money and there was supposed to be a pot there. It's, you know, it's probably the horse is gone and we're gonna lock the bond door now, but.
I think the delinquency apartments used to be out here in his apartment lot.
Correct, I think so. This may be.
Part of this, oh yeah, part of this was the playground for the school and part of it was some old, really bad apartments.
And then it's nice to see that they helped them relocate as well. But it's just curious that we don't have the Old Courthouse Common as being one of the elderly. It would have been nice for me to be able to go and sit there, but. Oh, wow. Anyway, just some information I gleaned reading all these town reports.
Yeah, it's interesting, those old town reports.
They are.
Good historian, rec historian.
Yeah.
Well, no, that, that's every meeting.
I am a, I am a member of the rec advisory committee and no one has ever come to me and asked me how to donate. They might have gone to the recreation commit, uh, center, the rec center committee, which is a different outfit. But as far as recreation advisory, nobody's asked me.
And to be fair, I don't even know who's on the rec advisory committee, but to flip it around the other side, it seems to me that they could have been more proactive, beating the drum.
Larry Wiggins is our commander, so to speak, our chairman.
Larry Wiggins or Flint?
Flint, excuse me.
Anyway, I think we've raised the issue. It's now been broadcast and the checks will come flooding in.
Or at least we'll start asking for.
For.
Or offer people the opportunity.
I mean, we, Mrs. Urban and I participated in a great exercise program and we had horrible, horrible balls that were all falling apart and you couldn't use them anymore and they, we encouraged them to buy new balls and we offered to pay for them because, you know, we pay such a fabulous fee of $1 to participate that, you know, we're, people are willing to be helpful.
Right, and we're looking at possibly needing to adjust those fee schedules, maybe like $5 or so. And also the rec department has a fund that they should be able to purchase new balls out of.
They did, they did. But my point is that people are willing, as Mrs. Urban pointed out, to be engaged in things that they believe in. And thank you for your time.
Yep. Bert?
I should think that you donations have to ask for, usually. But, but you've reached your target, so I guess that's a new number. The law books back here, missing to me is Boberson. They've been used over the years a number of times. And to, for them to vanish. Yep, they're still going. Is, is unacceptable. It, I was told as a cost of $2,000 a year. If that number was brought out by any person with authority here, it's a lie. You do not get a new set of books every year. You get one or two, maybe three, that you pay for. And you get the current status of the law in the new books, the changes, the old. You get the handout that comes with it. And it takes, and I'm being sarcastic here, it takes a long time to put them in. Take the book out, you take the back of it and you put it down this way, you take that one out, you put it in the trash can, you take the next one and you put it in and you close the book. Then you gotta go get the next book and repeat that process for each book that's there. Tremendous amount of work and time involved. I think it is asinine, stupid and wrong to have taken them out of this room. So that if a citizen wants to refer to the statute or you and you wanna debate it, you could do it. Yes, you can get it online, but you can't get it online with the case law that goes along with it as to how the, the law was melted down. Example being, there's a law made and Bert doesn't agree with it. He takes it to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court makes a decision that becomes an annotation to the statute. Tell it how it was interpreted. Because in that case, if Bert did that, either this guy won or Bert won. So what did they win on? And what was the law changed to? So taking them out is not a frugal thing. It is asinine, as I said, and they should return. If they found their way into the dumpster, then I should think that more thought would be done in, in the process of what is happening and what is being done. There seems to be a lot of things that the community doesn't want. And we saw a sense of them tonight. Common being one, law books being another. It's just unnecessary and wrong. That takes care of that. And then my 91A request, I wanna, I wanna make this clear. The law says, and we could read it, we have it here, if it is reasonably available. What in my request is not reasonably available? Because I've received absolutely nothing. And Jeff, you cited that I threatened a lawsuit? Yep. And you're making it winnable. Because there are items in there that I could have had day two, three, a week. But I've not got anything. So stupid what stupid is, retaliation is what retaliation is. And this guy right here has trespassed. As far as I'm concerned, he is dishonest. He has spoken to things in a general term that should have been spoken to this board in actual terms. He is not doing his job for this community. And you are following like sheep. So in all my years of sitting here, Jeff, been a, a long time. Lot of talk about the eighties all the way up through. I've never seen it this bad, where things are put in with very little conversation on the board. The whole idea of the board and the public being here is to have the issue come forward like Virginia did tonight. That's the norm. That's what's foreseen in how our government's supposed to run. Okay, you guys do something, then it comes in, gets changed, not denial, change to make it right. And that's what makes a democracy. That's why we have Republicans and Democrats, so that they can make things right to come in the middle. Not, we'll put a wing on this side of the airplane and the other one, no we won't. It doesn't fly. It flies when it works. And that's not working. So that all being said, and because of the bigger issue here, I'll leave that alone tonight. Could you get your ass handed to you on that one? Clear and simple. It is wrong. Something's wrong here, Jeff. The formula is wrong. Things are not working well. And as an observer, I can say that. Because I've seen a lot of these meetings, Jeff, a lot of these meetings, haven't I? Been doing it for years. Sullivan County, O'Neill, gut it down. And all of a sudden, bang, it's back a big problem. Why? And so as I look at the dichotomy between the cooperation I've gotten on my right to no request from the town, I give it a zero. It flunks. As far as the county is concerned, I could not be more, given what I wanted. Come in, I'm partying. Do it. Significantly different. And either the bookkeeping system here or the filekeeping system here doesn't work well, you gotta go down in the cellar to find it. Is it over here or is it over here? Oh, no, it's upstairs there. Sullivan County had it all, laid it right out. Within four days, I had, I sat there and viewed documents for three hours and I came back the next Friday. And that's ongoing now. I'll do what I can do, whatever I want, and it's there. So if you as a chair and at this board, if you think that that's right and it's gonna go on unsaid and undone, you're wrong. And if it takes a lawsuit to do it, I will gladly do it, Jeff. I have no problem whatsoever. I've done many of them and I'll do another one. I'm asking you to, if you wanna get out of this, you produce something. Seventy something days, give me a break. So that all being said, your report card as a board is failed, in my opinion. I guess that's enough said.
Anyone else? Yes, state your name first.
Alyssa Stevens. This now marks about a year of my husband and I coming here on behalf of ourselves and also K.A. Stevens. Guess it's our happy anniversary to us coming to the board to bring forward the challenges that we have continued to endure. The first one being the Sand Hill Bridge Bid, which included the depository letter to the DOT, a bridge posting on Coon Brook Road, or maybe it's the road, not sure. But that bridge was structurally sound as we all have found out repeatedly. A road excavation permitting issue that we had with Todd Cartier, the winter sand bid for Newport, and the last one being the road grant waivers. Just a quick recap, I guess, so we can all remember why we've now had to attend the last five or six meetings over the past year. March 20th, Josh and I attended. We made our initial request for letters to be sent or to be created, drafted, however you take it. One being to the NHDOT and one being to us personally from Todd Cartier. At that meeting, the Board of Selectmen, three out of the five, had voted for that and that these letters were to be drafted for us. April 3rd, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, a couple of folks here in the audience had requested where it's, the board stood with the letters, where they were at in the process. It was acknowledged that Stevens would have their letters by the end of the week, which would have been April 7th. April 7ths had come and gone. We had not heard any communication from anyone, no letters, no communication. Last Tuesday, April 11th, my husband and I sent an email to the board, all of you had received. received. "Good afternoon. At the March 20th Board of Selectmen meeting, we requested to have two letters written. Our requests to the Board of Selectmen were: one, a letter to be written from the Board of Selectmen on Town Letterhead sent to C.R. Wilkie at the NHDOT acknowledging that the previous letter written by Todd Cardier on behalf of the town was written out of malicious intent and that information within the letter had no actual or factual basis. The second letter, a letter of apology written from Todd Cardier personally to K.A. Stevens acknowledging his wrongdoing and reason why it was done. Again, at the April Board meeting, it was acknowledged by the board that K.A. Stevens would have their letters by the end of the week, April 7th. As we had communicated to Jim Burrows previous, we would like the opportunity to review the letter to the DOT prior to it getting sent. We would like to ensure that the information is accurate and truthful this time around. To date, today, the 17th, we had not received, excuse me, to date, April 11th, when I, we had not received any letters, and we would like an update on when we expect to review them." That was last Tuesday. To date today, April 17th, we had absolutely no response from any of you, acknowledging the fact that we had sent an email asking for an update. I find that appalling from a Board of Selectmen. In my world, typically, an acknowledgement email is to be done at least within 24 to 48 hours, just saying, "I've received your email, I'm working on it, I don't have an update, somebody will be in contact with you," anything, just an acknowledgement. I didn't necessarily need an answer, but it was completely radio silent, and it has been until Wayne just asked that question. But that's why we came here, to ask. I'm asking why none of you could acknowledge an email after the last year that we have all had together? I asked for an acknowledgement, and we got nothing. And that really disappoints us, to think that that's how a board is representing our town. And especially for a business that has had so many challenges with you guys in the last 12 months, more like two years, but 12 months that we have brought it to your attention. And I just want to know why. Again, my question has remained, why are we being treated this way? We, to date, don't know what we have done to deserve this kind of treatment repeatedly? We've asked, no one wants to give an answer? Where do we all stand through this? And how do we all move forward?
Whole bunch of questions there, Alyssa.
There are a lot of questions, yes, Jeff.
So let me just try to read through those a little bit. So honestly, like I spoke to Wayne just a minute ago, and I said that there's been a process. So I apologize for not getting back to you on your status update, because what that did was it prompted a whole bunch of discussion behind the scenes with us to keep this process moving to get an outcome. So it wasn't like we were, and I do apologize, nothing malicious in not getting right back to you to tell you that we were working on it, but we were. And it is taking some evolution to get to where we are. So I apologize for you feeling like that, it's negligence on our part for not getting back to you to tell you that we were still working through it. It is a bit of a process. So we're through it, you'll have it tomorrow, that is in stone.
And that is, you're mailing it tomorrow, you're emailing it tomorrow, I can come pick up the letter from Hunter tomorrow.
How about you do all three?
I'm asking, because I don't want to wait three days for the mail, so how can we make that happen?
I need to sign the letters once they're printed, and that'll be about 3 o'clock before I can get anything, so it should be available.
So I can contact Joanne possibly? Would she have the letters?
She should, yeah.
I will make contact with her tomorrow then.
Bert?
A letter of apology.
Hi, we have a question.
Both letters.
Both letters.
Both letters. Thank you.
Okay. Both letters.
And I want to thank Jim for doggedly pursuing this process.
Oh, I got that. Jim and I know, I mean, we're friends, and we do a lot of stuff together with the cars and all that stuff.
With five of us, there's no decision done in a vacuum, all right? It's done as a group. And it's, it takes time. I wish it could be faster, and I wish it could be, you know, it is what it is, and it is what it is. What we are getting it done, it is in stone.
Bert, any questions? We'll see what it is when we read it. How do they say it? Jeff, you asked the school for snow removal bids. For your information, the second bidder was four times the person who won the bid. Jeff, that's four times. Jeff, you got that?
Four.
Sure? Four. And the contract had in it a two-year extension.
I saw that.
So there's a, kind of like a, geez, Josh Stevens was the low bidder, and Jeff is asking for this. Is that retaliation? Or what is it? Right-to-no request? You know I know the law. You can get, you've got to know that. I've known it for 20, 30 years. So I know you know that I know that. But still, I question at a time like now, with what's happened between the bridge, weight limits, perfectly good bridge being closed down to people, and no reparations for what they were done, not even asking anybody how you could kiss their butt, make them feel better, nothing. And then the nasty weather that is sent, and the loss of 20-some-odd thousand dollars that we as Newport had to pay in, does that come out of whose pocket? Is it you? He? Oh, no, it comes out of all the citizens. So I will finish.
I didn't understand.
I will finish, I will finish. So your right to get it is a right. Your right to ask it is a right. But Jeff, boy, it sure looks like somebody, either the group, something here is wrong as far as doing business as it relates to Josh Stevens. Four times. The bid, this bid, was one quarter of this bid. Thank you.
Yeah, I asked what the snow removal bids were for the last five years. K.A. Stevens got it in 2018 for three years with a two-year extension. So it's been the last five years. And looking at it, you know, I'm sort of wondering, you know, if that price was good in 2018 with inflation and the cost of everything going up, I think the school got a great deal this last year or so, probably compared to what it cost them to do.
They got a great deal the first year because it didn't cost them $100,000.
Can you just clarify the very beginning, what you said about the first bid was four times, or the second bid was four times what the first bid?
The first bid rounded off $25,000. The second bid was $100,000 for the same job.
That was $34.
Excuse me, the whole, okay. In the whole contract, it was four times. So what would you, what would you have taken?
Taken a lower bid. Also, you know, Stevens has been doing it quite a while. And what I've seen out there, they do a good job. Josh, you have?
I do. If I could, Josh Stevens, I'd like to play for you folks your request, Jeff, because when I watched it, I was absolutely appalled. The way that you presented it, I'm hoping that you've got some useful information to bring back to the board, because that was your comment to the school board, and I will certainly play that so you folks can hear that and understand that. But you came to the board, we had a meeting here on March 20th. On March 23rd, you attended the school board meeting, and you didn't go into that school board meeting asking for subcontracts. Again, as a chairman, you singled out K.A. Stevens. You know that I plowed down there, Jeff, for 14 years. Whether you know it's 14 or 12 or whatever that might be, you know damn well what the snowplow contract was and who has been completing it. Okay? That's personal. I don't come in here to personally attack Jeff. I'm not. I'm here as the board saying, why does this stuff keep happening, folks? We're a business, we're dedicated to the community, that's why we're here. And this request that was made, you made a request, and you simply said, "I'm going to take back the information to the board," because clearly, the school board does a better job of administering bids. And I'm assuming you folks have gotten that information, so you can hopefully change that in your policies. Because they, they do have a contract, and it does state when things can be extended, when times have to be in. They timestamp their bids, there is a time. So I'm assuming that information has been helpful.
You guys have all refused that then with him?
Nope, they haven't, not yet.
But you are aware that he went and requested this information on behalf of the board?
No, on behalf of myself.
So why would you personally go out and ask that question? Because if I were a little smarter, I would have gone there and asked for all bidding processes and policies and procedures for all subcontractors, not the snow removal. You don't feel, you don't feel like that is singling us out once again?
Because over time, I've had people wonder about whether that's ever been put out to bid. And I've had people say, "I wish I could bid on that." You know, so...
Well, welcome to our world. We wanted to bid on the Newport sand too, and we didn't get that opportunity this year.
For the last two years, Jeff.
And hopefully that's fixed now.
While it can hold.
Anything else you wanted to play that, or?
I've summed it up for you folks. Everybody can go out and certainly listen to the meeting, that's, I just, I'm very disappointed, Jeff, because honestly, if you want to adjust or help the policy or procedure that you folks are using here, and your presentation was that, okay? And again, you singled out us. And I don't understand, Jeff. I've never had any personal contact with you other than coming to the board. That's it. I've never had anything. And I'm just very discouraged that that continues. That's all I have to say. And it has become personal, Jeff. I hate coming here and singing and yelling, but the fact is, that's the fact. That's what, that's your actions. That wasn't my actions. I don't come here and single out anyone. And so that's how I feel as a business owner. You have every right to go down and put a 91A request in for any information possible, Jeff. But when we come here, and it was kind of a bit of a heated meeting that ended, you folks agreed to possibly move forward with a letter being written, and three days later, that's, to me, that's retaliation. Maybe not. You know, it's my interpretation, Jeff.
Well, say, probably partially my anger, partially a lot, say, it's some perception around town about how bidding is done at the high school. And honestly, I'm...
Why are they asking you? They could go to the school and ask, you know.
You know, it was something I felt, but might as well check into. And you've gotten the bid, you know?
And what did you find? What was the information? Like, what was your intent going into asking for that information?
I found that the school district actually did put it out to bid. And that you and United responded, and you had the low bid.
For the last, if you go back through, we could actually go further, you can go to 2009 when it started with us, and every three years, it was put into the paper.
Doug? I have something a little bit different, and we're done with that.
You are?
So I have a couple of concerns. So that was a little bit of false pretense there. You said you were going in for the board, but you're really going in for yourself. That's bad, bad, whatever. Second of all, what was the decision on putting your backs to the public in a town meeting?
During what?
During the meeting, we had...
You mean the deliberative session? You mean, why were we facing the front instead of the audience?
Yes.
Because it's the deliberative session of the legislative bodies, which is the town. It was not a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. And we are there attending the meeting.
Well, you're like everybody else.
That's why we face the podium, so we hear the people when they speak. We are not at the front holding the meeting. It's the moderator's meeting. We are attendees, just like everyone else.
So you've done that every year?
Yes.
Okay. Not a fan of it, because as a, as a board, you need to face your public. And second of all...
But let me clarify that. Here we are, the board facing the public. At the deliberative session, that's the legislative body, that's all the voters in town that come out, and they hear everyone, we hear everyone. We are not sitting up like on a podium, you know, overseeing the meeting. We are there to hear, just like everyone else.
Or they should be sitting in the back then or wherever, you know.
I actually often wander to the back because I like watching the meetings from the back.
My second point is, why are you separating the board from the taxpayers, the voters, when they ask you a question, the whole board wants to sit?
That was on the petition article, which was not our article. It was not our article to speak to. That was put in by petition.
They were asking the board a question.
They were asking individual board members questions, and it was up to each individual board member as to whether or how to respond.
So nobody felt unnecessary to respond, no comment at this time, anything to your public?
Sometimes no comment isn't comment.
And if you went and asked most of the voters, they were saying you were not being upfront with them. You know, that's just a negative thing to do.
And most of the voters left after the vote on that and did not stay for the remaining articles to hear them. So I'm going to assume a lot of the voters were there just for Article 21, and as soon as that was done, they felt there wasn't any need to stay for the rest of the articles. There probably half the room left or something. Is that a fair statement?
A lot did leave us, yeah. That's not my point, though. Okay? I don't care if they all got left. My point is you didn't answer the question. That's all.
If it was a question on an article that we supported, that was one of our articles, certainly we would have, I hope, answered it. We would have had an obligation to answer questions on articles we support. That was a petition article, which, you know, questions should go to the petitioner.
It's up to your opinion, I guess.
Jeff, there have been many articles in the past that have been presented and supported by Selectmen at the podium. Many.
Yes.
Yep.
That was one that was not. We did not, we did not...
I got it, I got it, Jeff. 111 to 18, I got it. You know, it's, it couldn't be clearer, Jeff. Your arrogance and your judgments are falling like manure on pavement here. It's just, it's clear. 111 to 18. Five board members, maybe their five wives is 10, and then some employees, the close net group. I think, Jeff, just the point of, there's got to be a change here in attitudes and the way things are done. And going forward with the community center without asking us adds another one to it. Yes, you've got the money, but we have to pay for it from then on out. And you're strapping us with that without asking us for a vote. And I support it significantly. And I support our democracy, which is, you ask for things like that to be done. And you're not.
I want to respond to Doug, because I know the question you're asking.
I want to respond to Doug because I know the question you're asking and I know who asked it. And I'm a bit embarrassed that we didn't get up, but at the same point, none of us here really knew the answer. And maybe that's what we stood up, should have stood up and said. And so, you know, and I went and spoke to Bert in the afternoon. It's not like me to be a wallflower, and I'm not a sheep. Okay?
Hunter?
Yeah, just a couple of points of information. Early in the process to raise funds for the community center, a form was developed affording people the opportunity to donate at various levels. I don't recall exactly what the levels, six or eight, so on and so forth. Those were widely used. And that form is on the town's website, and the department has been there for quite some time. And with respect to ninety-one A requests that's referred to, that, as I've said before, was turned over to the town council for response. He's dealt with it according to his best judgment. And as of today, he confirms it. He intends to comply with that request by the stated date of the twenty. That's all I can tell you because I don't know any more about it than that. We've turned it over to him and he's managed it from that moment forward.
Hunter, how many days total will that be?
I have no idea.
Oh. What's fifty-seven and twenty? So, how many days did it take before you handed it over to the attorney?
I don't recall. It's not in your manual.
And how much did you pay the attorney to do that?
I haven't gotten the bill yet, but I'm sure it's going to be substantial. It's a lot of time and a lot of data.
Yep. And when I get the attorney bills that I asked for, Hunter, what will I get on that bill? Will there be redactions on that bill?
That's what I understand, but I haven't seen it.
Oh, that's what you understand. Okay. Now, let's talk about this now for a minute. Wait a minute, sir, I'm talking. Please recognize me to finish my statement. So, here you have a bill from the attorney. And it says, X number of hours, the dollars are out. The person receiving the bill assumes that those are all for the project that he requested. And so, he adds them all together and then can't tie them to anything? Okay. Here comes this issue that we're talking about over here. And I look at the issue and say, oh, here's this bill that says that issue. It doesn't say a decision was made. It doesn't say who's right or wrong. It has no protection away from the right to know law. I'm asking for what you paid for what you did. And so, right here, elevator issue, two thousand dollars. Property line issue, X number of dollars. How does redacting that make that a legal document? So, Hunter, you're costing us a lot of money, and we are going to fight it out. And I'm going to enjoy the fucking hell out of it.
Hunter?
So, I have no idea what is going to be redacted or how many items will be redacted. I'm just told that that process will be undertaken by the attorney. So, I don't know if it's one item or a thousand items. So, I can't comment on that.
It's going to be good when I see it.
Anyone else from the floor? Yes, my name, state your name for the record, please.
Laura Stetson. Excuse me. Laura Stetson. Couple of weeks ago, I asked for minutes from the February work sessions, budget work sessions, and did not receive, have not received them. It's been two months now since those February meetings. And I was wondering if I would be able to get them within the next two weeks.
That task was assigned to Paul Brown. I'll inquire tomorrow and see what results.
Why would something be redacted?
To tell you the truth, I don't know typically if it exposes certain information that would be proprietary. I don't know. That's the attorney's purview on this matter. It's not an uncommon, not an uncommon practice. We've had similar requests from, I believe, Mr. Wenzel, and went through years and years and years and years with all sorts of reductions being made. So, I've left determination to our attorney. He's the one that went to law school, and he's the one that provides us with legal guidance.
I think Doug had his hand up.
How long we kept the same attorney?
Hmm, I think since the previous one retired.
No dates and times?
I can't recall. It's the same firm.
But it's ten, fifteen years, twenty years you've had?
No. Maybe two years with this guy.
And I'm assuming we shopped around and we got good prices and background and all that in different firms?
We're with the same firm we've been with for a while. Actually, they kind of, the firm we were with combined with another firm. So, it's basically a consolidated firm, which provides other attorneys such as...
So, it's not an L G C or anything like that?
No. Municipal law is very different than going out and getting a public defender.
Well, I understand that. I mean, I've been on boards and I've dealt with lawyers on boards, and that was my question.
Thanks. Okay. Bert?
I saw Mr. Wenzel's a little bit, and all you saw was the date. No issue, and just dollars.
So, you couldn't match it up?
Didn't anything. That's right. And how is it protected? If you spent ten thousand dollars to do this, you spent ten thousand dollars to do this. So, where's the protection that gets it out of the realm of the citizen, understanding what you spent to do something? So, if this attorney does it this time, he's going to have to defend it because it is not rational. The right to know law is to give us everything that we possibly can get without jeopardizing your case during the time that the case is going on. Maybe you could do that, but otherwise, no. Because it's a nothing piece of paper. A date and dollars for what? Even grocery shop?
Mar, you got a hand?
Yes. Now, this is for Keith. I've been sitting here since June twenty-twelve, and I have to let you know that I need to take a break, okay? I will be resigning this position. I will do the corrections for the minutes, and I will do these minutes. But in two weeks, you five, we'll need to find another secretary. I need to take at least the summer off because it's just getting to me. I'm a resident of this town, and it's just building up.
All right. Well, thanks for all the time you put in. We appreciate it. Your minutes have been excellent.
I figure we should take the summer off until you're not going to be able to...
If you don't run and you just, you know...
Wayne? Yeah, Wayne, my wife is putting in some ninety-one As, and this has been a month ago, and she still ain't got no answers.
Doctor?
I received one ninety-one A request from his wife within a day or two of the meeting. She had attended and responded to it almost immediately, so I have no idea what he saw. So, there is something that he thinks has been submitted and not responded to.
I'll go home and tell her she told me a lie. Maybe you can...
I would do that way.
I would because she didn't want to see it.
He's got to drive you down.
If there's something he believes that has been asked and not answered, I'd be happy to hear about it first thing in the morning.
Why we need a policy? So, ninety-one As are in writing, so we can timestamp their receipt.
A little bit bigger screen, I'd search it.
They've got to be mentioned. Just spoken, and it's hard to keep track of all of it that way.
But spoken in a public meeting is good enough, right?
I personally think they should be written.
Well, the thing, but the law, interpret the law. All I have to do is make a request. It doesn't say it has to be in writing. They weren't, Jim, they weren't smart enough to put in writing?
So, the school's policy doesn't apply where it says, come into the office and say it verbally or send an email? I believe that's the school's policy.
Yep. They put that in because of my right to know request.
Wayne? Four meetings ago, she sent right here, and she asked about it, and he said, you'll have to go to the attorney. She said, why does it have to go to the attorney? You know, I mean, my wife has never threatened her for nothing. You know? Come on.
Hunter?
That's not what I was saying.
You did. I sent right here. Don't you say you didn't. Because I sent right in.
Can I respond to this?
She asked why the party might not go to an attorney. And I said, generally, if they don't, always they only go to attorneys if a applicant has threatened litigation.
All right. Anyone else from the floor?
No, I'm in a guy. I'm in trouble.
Moving on to communication. Barry?
No, I'd just like to respond to about this issue of the letters. And efforts were made to get the letters out. As Jim mentioned, it's a process. I'm hoping, because I've read Jim's letters, and I thought he did a great job in putting that together, and he's doggedly fought to keep it moving. Because there was a process that kind of, we had to go through apparently. So, I hope you don't think that we're doing things to hurt you or not. He worked hard at that. And as we talked about tonight, get the damn things out. And you better have it tomorrow. I understand you're angst about it. I really do.
Like I said, it was an email sent and absolutely no response, not an acknowledgement at all.
We own that.
I'm sorry?
We own it.
That's why we would feel the way we would, right?
Yep. I understand, but hopefully...
But I appreciate you working in the background to...
He did. He worked very hard at it. Anything else? Barry? No, I'm all set.
Keith?
No, I'm good.
Jeff?
Just the fact that we did receive an email regarding Chandler's Wheels Road, the trash. I believe, Hunter, it was, he did the wrong email for you, so I recognize that and forward that to you, as you would have done that before. But I just want to see that, you know, that process is still on our radar, still moving forward.
Absolutely. In fact, I communicated to him that we anticipated having that probably on or about me first.
Good.
So, it's still the case.
That's the only communication that I received.
Bert?
Wayne, don't go home and be mad at your wife. No.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Hunter, anything?
No, thank you.
All right. Second?
No, no, no. I'm sorry.
No, we have a non-public session, that's right.
NSA ninety-one A three...
Before we go, a question for you, Bert. When I came to your meeting last time you met, you commented about your building and the fact you, taxpayers are on the hook for two million bucks for a bond, and some of what was promised is being kicked out because of the cost. And Steve mentioned he was having a building committee the next day. Do you know what the result of that was, building committee?
No.
Because those don't seem to have minutes available. Because I got the impression it might have been addressed at that meeting.
You know, as a school board member, I can't speak to that.
To a public meeting? I can remember that line.
But I mean, it's the same shit that's here, okay?
We're not sheep. I'm not a sheep, and I don't like being a sheep, okay?
Yep. And that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, when the cake is baked, if it's not edible, then you go back and you fix it.
So, I'm in a non-public under NSA ninety-one A three, section two B... All right, gentlemen.
Is there a second? All right. Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
An all-vote yes. Bert, can you get the door? Oh, never mind. Mar has to leave.